With liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, please be seated. Please remember to silence your cell phones if you have them. If not, I believe it is Supervisor Potabom's turn to answer your phone. He said, "911, what's your emergency?" First item on the agenda as always is citizen concerns. If there is an item you would like to address that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, item number two is approval of the agenda, I'll move it.
Second?
Second by Taylor, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 5-0. Items three through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion, items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the September 26 meeting. Item four is approval of the claims.
I'm asking the board to refrain from paying one claim at this time, from Rockco LLC.
Very well, with that change, item four is approval of those claims. Item five from Board Administration includes item A, approval of resolution for a tax abatement for Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence. Item B, approval of medical examiner contract with Dr. Julie A. Briner. Item C, approval of appointments of Dr. Thomas Carroll and Dr. Bryce W. Knoll as deputy medical examiners. And item D is approval of resolution thanking and commending a county employee for years of service. That employee is Mark Olson. And item six from Human Resources includes item A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions, and item B, authorizing the chairman to sign the authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item A, approval of the memorandum includes the hiring of the community and economic development director, David Gleiser, congratulations, as a transfer to the director position, and also the retirement of our board attorney. Well resignation sounds more sad. Thank you for your work with the board, enjoy your plans ahead next month.
I thought you just didn't like sitting next to me.
That may be true, but we're gonna... I'll go ahead and move the consent agenda as amended for the claims process.
I'll second it.
Motion by Taylor, second by Radig, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 5-0. We are now at a 4:35 PM set time, this is from the public bidder. This is for action, this is the public hearing, and a sale of property parcel also known as 1924 Ingleside Avenue. Before the board receives bids, is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the sale of this property during this public hearing?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair, move that the hearing be closed.
I'll second the motion by Taylor, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 5-0. We are now receiving bids for this property, if you would like to bid on this property, please come forward, state your name and address, and your opening bid.
My name is Douglas Webb, my address is 30074 Juniper Avenue, Hinton, Iowa. I would like to make a bid of $313.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to bid on this property? Going once, going twice. Move the property to be sold for $313 plus recording fees to Mr. Douglas Whale.
Second?
Second by Taylor, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 5-0, congratulations sir, Heather will help you with paperwork. Item eight for action is approval and reading of proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I will move for reading.
I'll second.
Second by Radig. The proclamation before me reads, whereas domestic violence is a serious crime affecting individuals and families in all Sioux land communities, all races, ages, income levels, lifestyles, and sexes, and in fact is probably affecting someone you know, and every nine seconds someone experiences the crime of domestic violence, and whereas one in three women will be a victim of violence in her lifetime, domestic violence violates an individual's human rights by destroying dignity, security, and self-worth due to the systematic abuse of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. CSADV works every day to help end these acts of violence and to help rebuild the lives of the survivors. And whereas in Sioux land, the Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence is available 24 hours a day, and last year responded to nearly 2,000 victims, provided 12,768 nights of shelter to 425 adults and 331 children fleeing domestic abuse, and despite high census, no one in an unsafe situation was turned away. And whereas the impact of domestic violence affects all of the members of the community, and only a coordinated community response will put a stop to these atrocious crimes and assure funding is continuously available to provide these life-saving services, now therefore I, Matthew A. Ung, Chairman, on behalf of the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Woodbury County, Iowa, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled events and programs and to think about the fact that it is someone you know. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this resolution?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Margaret Sanders, I'm the Director of the Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence, and I would like to thank you for taking the time to acknowledge the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As you may or may not know, domestic violence continues to be very prevalent across our nation and as well in our community. About three women each day in our nation are killed as a result of domestic violence. About every six weeks, a woman or child in Iowa is killed as a result of domestic violence. And that may be even more frequent, because oftentimes the cause of death may be related to domestic violence, but it is not indicated on the death certificate. Women ages 20 to 24 are in the greatest risk of experiencing domestic violence, and we see that on a continual basis. I also want to emphasize that it's not only women that experience domestic violence, we're seeing more and more men come forward as victims of domestic violence as well. As the proclamation said, CSADV is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, there is no charge for our services, and we do not turn anyone away that's in an unsafe situation related to domestic violence. To give you a little bit closer look at what that means to us this very weekend, starting on Friday, we had over 51 women and children in shelter, all of our beds were full, we couldn't place anymore in shelter. We had a family, one mom and five kids in a motel, as well as another mom and her son in a motel, and we worked with a sister agency over in South Sioux, Haven House, to take another family so that we did not need to put them in a motel. Those individuals that are in motels receive services just like those in the shelter, but I just tell you this to emphasize that the prevalence of domestic violence continues to rise, it is a problem in our community, and it is a cause for many women to be homeless. We have a lot more to do to rectify the issues related to violence, not just domestic violence, but other forms of violence that play into domestic violence as well. With that, I want you to know our crisis line is available 24/7, a live person is always there to answer that call, support that individual that calls, and respond to anyone that may be in the hospital or some other place needing an advocate. Any questions? I want to end by inviting you to ribbon cutting that we're having at the end of this month, the second Tuesday, from 4 to 6. We have a positional administrative office for both administration and our outreach program, and we're cutting the ribbon to acknowledge that that building is being well-served.
Thank you.
So I invite you all to come, take a look at what we've got, and ask any questions that you have about our services at that time. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Board members thoughts?
Just appreciate very much the service that is given and the compassion and care as well, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your advocacy and help.
Reality is...
Really wish it wasn't needed.
Exactly.
I really wish it wasn't needed, but thank you for the work you do.
Reality is the increased prevalence, as you mentioned, but we hope and pray that there's a, you know, positive reinforcements for your mission as you go forward. Hopefully that's noticed as well. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 5-0. Item nine from Human Resources includes approval of contractual agreement for employee assistance program with employee and family resources.
It's just, this is a contract that PJ and Abby have reviewed, it's all good, the program we're very proud of, it provides tremendous extra help for our employees, doubles the number of face-to-face visits that are available for employees, as well as brings other services and things for employees.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much, this is something that we discussed over Health and Wellness Committee, and I think is very important, and one of the things I want to emphasize to our department heads and elected officials is that this word get out to our employees, over, we have over 400, and Ed, you correct me if I'm wrong on any of the information that I'm about to share, employees can receive six face-to-face counseling's per incident that they have in their lives?
For each incident, so let's say that there was a marital issue of some sort, there would be six visits available for that. If they had been a childcare incident or something similar to that, there would be another six visits that would be available. It's a process to follow, but there would be six face-to-face visits with a local counselor available.
Okay, these are masters-level counselors who have expertise in this and can touch lives within Woodbury County?
Yes, sir.
I want that message, and Mr. Chair, just ask if we can keep reemphasizing this at department head meetings, just being healthy, happy, bringing a lot of stress and background to work, I think that this is something that can be very powerful. My concern is, you know, just to continually to reemphasize this with leaders that this is available, and I think it's a very, very good thing.
Yeah, I think it's a great help to people. We like the idea that this particular organization does have also a 24/7 hotline available if you'd like to call. That hotline is manned by masters-level counselors and above, 24/7, from 7:00 AM to midnight, it's by counselors that are here within the state of Iowa, so it does give you very good local touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Radig, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 5-0. Item 10 for Emergency Services Director Gary Brown, for action is approval of Woodbury County EMS loan of $50,000 to mobile ambulance, purchase a 2017 Chevy Aero with a five-year payback agreement of 0% interest.
Good afternoon, Gary Brown, Emergency Services Director, Woodbury County. We started this loan program back in 1988 with $165,000, it was $150 federal revenue sharing money and $15,000 of rural assistance. After today, if you approve this loan, we'll broke the million-dollar mark of loans that we've made out of this fund. We've made 49 loans and never had as much as a late payment or anyone to fall down a loan, and that was kind of a concern when we first started it, but it's never, never been an issue. Gives the squads a chance to pick up their equipment and borrow the money at zero interest so they're not taking handcake fundraiser money and paying interest on loans.
Could you describe, you know, to the public just how important it is to keep up the volunteer ambulance crews out in the rural areas?
Well, we have 12 transporting ambulance services in rural Woodbury County, and it's tough, it's, the less people are volunteering today, the requirements on the volunteers are higher, our call volume continues to go up every year, the demand on the service goes up every year. Right now, for somebody to get, go from start to finish in an EMT course takes about four months, several, could be several hundred hours of ride time and about $1,800 plus books to get there, and that gets you at the basic level where you can work in the back of an ambulance. It's hard to find people that want to make that commitment, and it's even harder to find them once they do to, families are so busy now, it's hard to have them available to us 24/7. It's, it's not getting any better, and it's not any better on the fire side, quite honestly, the fire service side of it is also faced with sort of the same thing, their demand on their time isn't quite as great as it is in EMS, but now they're required to at least have firefighter one, which is a relatively new requirement, and there's a test that goes with it, so there's some stress and drama associated with getting to that, that level for fire service as well. We have, but we have 12 transporting ambulance services in the county, a lot of people say ambulance coverage during the daytime hours is the problem, but the daytime hours is dramatically different from one side of the county to the other because of both hospitals being in Sioux City. In Anthony, Iowa, for example, if you take a call at 3 o'clock in the morning, by the time you get the patient, take him to Sioux City, come back, change clothes, get ready to go to work, drive back to Sioux City, you're late for work. And the towns on the western side of the county, you can take a call at 6 o'clock in the morning and get to town, drop the patient off, come back, and still make it to work on time, so daytime hours actually is kind of a misnomer when they, when you hear people say that, because it really varies depending on how far out the service is and where they're actually taking the patient. So we do just about 1,200 calls for service a year, request for EMS services a year, and about one-third of those right now are running as critical care patients, patients that are in critical condition or need intervention in the back of the ambulance to save their lives. And they do everything you can imagine with EMS, so. But this loan fund program has been a really good thing, it was actually Jim O'Kane's idea, when Jim O'Kane worked back in 1988, and it's been, and it's been a real big success. It's probably one of the greatest things we did to help volunteer services out, they're able to get newer rigs and, and keep their equipment up to date without having to pay interest on a loan.
Questions? It's obviously working, and it's grown in its capacity over the years.
It's working well, it's done, it's done real well, matter of fact, this evening we have our county EMS meeting, and this is one of the agenda items we'll be talking about, which we talk about at just about every meeting, so we have a very active EMS association of the services in the county meet, once a month, or every other month, I guess, we're meeting now, so.
How much is a new ambulance these days?
Well, when we started the EMS loan fund program, you could buy a new ambulance for $80,000. Today, not a lot of bells and whistles, pretty standard rigs, about 160, 150, 160,000. But when we started this, you could buy a nice rig for $80,000. Defibrillators weren't even in place, when we started this fund, today those are about $45,000 or $50,000, this two devices could be $12,000 to $15,000, which is CPR fours, an ambulance cot, fully automatic ambulance cot could be $50,000. So it's, it's not cheap doing the, the equipment is not cheap. Radios went from back when we started $160, $200, today they're $6,500, $7,000.
Other questions?
I'd move to approve the Woodbury County EMS loan of $50,000 to mobile ambulance.
I'll second the motion by Taylor.
Et cetera.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 5-0. Item 11 from Building Services Director Kenny Schmitz includes item A for action, approval of Steamtrap Project, AIA G 701, change order number four, in the amount of $6,961.
The item before you is for approval of change order number four. The costs associated with the change order were originally part of change order number two, which had already been approved, but did not get included in the payment under the A document, or added by the engineer, and it was billed. So what this required was an actual change order to the project, which is number four, by contractual documents, and so we're now asking for approval to pay that amount. The work has already been completed, as I said, it was already anticipated and known, so this isn't something that's new, that's popped up, it was just a, basically a payment that was missed.
I'll move approval.
Second?
Second by Taylor, is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 5-0. Item B is approval of Tross泊霍it Building Detention and Public Elevators, the design and construction manager contracts.
Tross泊霍it elevators have reached their, their life expectancy, we've been told by Shoemaker Elevator, several if not many times, that the elevators have reached their useful life, some parts are not, are no longer obtainable. Recently, we, we had a motor failure on one of the units whereby the elevator was down for approximately three days. Shoemaker Elevator told us that we would have to have the existing motor replaced, or, I'm sorry, repaired, as there was no longer replacements available. We had them remove the motor, bring it to Thorpe Electric for repair, whereby Thorpe Electric told us, or told Shoemaker, that the unit was no longer repairable. At that point, we were scrambling on what to do. Shoemaker, of course, is in the elevator business and started looking nationally through some of their decommissioned units, they did find a used and old motor that we could use, and they replaced our unit with that. Again, the elevator was down for about three days, most of the board members probably didn't know that that took place at the time, however, my building liaison, Jeremy Taylor, certainly knew it, I think he probably got panicked calls from our detention director at the time on what we were going to do and how we were going to get that elevator back into service as quickly as possible. So what we're requesting now is we'd eventually like to go out and get bids for these elevator replacements, the first part of that, of course, would be design contracts and construction management contracts, which we are asking for approval for today. I got two pricing, two prices for the, for the engineering design contracts, one of those was from Goldberg Group Architects, that cost was $28,600 plus reimbursable expenses. The second one was for RML Architects, that was $42,000 plus $3,000, $3,000 in reimbursable expenses, so we're requesting approval of the lower of the two, which would be Goldberg Group Architects, and also approval of the Baker contract, which would be 15% of the actual competitive bid total for the project if approved.
Mr. Taylor?
Further good to the board, Kenny, can you let us know what the total estimation of probable cost is for a project this size and where CIP funds are otherwise going to be borrowed, who's the Peter and the Paul in this situation?
Yes, our projected estimates, I believe, are around $350,000. We would be looking to a 2018 CIP item number, which that has not yet been identified, so that's something our finance director could do for us, probably in March, is that correct, Dennis? I have Kevin Ross here with Goldberg Group Architects, if you have any questions that you'd like to ask of Kevin.
My only question for Kevin is what you bring as a justice group architecture firm to the table that a local architect, I understand that you are low already, so kudos to you there on the competitiveness of the price, but what do you bring as a justice, or an architect that is, has expertise in justice?
Well, part of what we'd like to do with the one elevator over there, the larger of the elevators, is incorporate that into the security electronic system that is for this juvenile detention center on the fourth floor, so some integration between the two systems. Part of projects we're still looking to redo is re-scope that project for the juvenile detention center for the security electronic system, to get that back out to bed, and I'd like to get this in conjunction with it so we get the controls for that elevator to be ran by the master control up there on the detention floor, so just integration between two of the projects we've got going on, I think will benefit the county, and look forward to working with you guys again for approval.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions?
Kenny, is there not, is somebody in your department that can act as a construction manager on an elevator project?
No, I don't believe with the complexity that's probably involved with this, I would say no.
Other questions?
I'd move to approve the Goldberg Group Architects Tross泊霍it elevator replacement design proposal dated 9/20/2017 in the amount of $28,600.
Second the motion by Taylor, discussion.
I do have one more question, I was gonna, after I asked you that, you said the complexity, I, something just blows me as far as architecture, I'm thinking elevator would be one of the easier things to design.
I think the design part of it is going to be difficult due to, due to tying into the controls.
It's a lot of the electronics and programming goes into the elevator system, it's not just the mechanics of the elevator, or the cab, or the motors and stuff like that, and some complexity tied into the security electronic system to make sure that works seamlessly.
I know we're in the process of just replacing our second one where I work my full-time job, we can have a project manager for it?
Sure, and I, and I think as far as the project manager part of it, that's going to also be the struggle with this project, is the detention controls that tie into that, we've got some very old controls right now, those are going to have to be updated and tied into that system as well as the elevator, and I see that being very time-consuming, and I don't think that Building Services has the time to, 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 to prepare the oversight for that project that it's probably going to take.
I think the complexity of scheduling too would probably more, not to speak for Kenny, but some of this as well too, with it being operational 24/7, a lot of work coming and going on there, it's quite critical on one of this timing to some of these things occur with that elevator being down, the control system being down, so it'll take a fair amount of manpower to make sure these things go as smooth as they can.
It will.
But on something like this, I mean, like, you could just get bids from Kohn or Schumacher and how they would replace it, essentially hire them and have the state inspection done upon completion.
We could do that. What I can say is, this is more complex, and one of the last projects we did here at the courthouse, we really didn't fare that well, and we didn't use a construction manager, and so that's why I'm certainly suggesting, since this is a more complex project, that we do.
Further discussion, Mr. Taylor?
Just one other question, it's a little unrelated, but typically with these elevators, you have a service contract that you're either paying Schumacher or someone else, is that correct?
Yes, yes, there's always a maintenance contract tied into it.
Are we going to realize any savings, I mean, if you have a brand-new product, you see where I'm going with this?
I certainly hope that we would. Usually, usually those maintenance contracts are based off the age of your elevator and the possibilities for failure.
And I, I certainly hope we'd insist in negotiating that contract, that that's something that, you understand where I'm going, where if, if we have something that's new, paying $700 a month versus $200?
Yes, and certainly that's something that would be, that would be talked about and looked at.
Thank you.
Mr. Radig?
As you say, like, a lot of those maintenance contracts, you have the same hourly rate, it's just that the frequency of, you know, calls coming in might be diminished with a newer piece of equipment.
Right, but we typically pay on a monthly basis a certain service contract fee separately, and so that's what I'm concerned about in this instance.
Right, and then, and they're usually, they're flat fee, and depending on how the contract is drafted, something like our Tross泊霍it current contract, Shoemaker is covering the parts, that is how we were very lucky to have them identify and replace a motor, that was no expense to the county. Of course, yes, we are paying for that under contract, but we didn't have to try to purchase that motor ourselves, which was not available, but had it been available, we would have been buying it, if it weren't written into the contract as a repair item.
Thank you.
Hearing no further comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Those say nay. Passes five zero.
Four to one.
Four to one. Radig opposed. Thank you.
I move to approve the Baker Group AIA C-132 contract for Tross泊霍 elevator replacement.
I'll second the motion by Taylor. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Nay. Passes four to one. Radig opposed. Thank you. I have a point-of-order question for the clerk to the board, county auditor, if you'll permit me. It's apparent to me there is a quorum of the Sioux Rivers Governance Board at the moment. I saw you leave your chair, which doesn't happen very often during a meeting, so I wanted to ask you what you advised.
I'd ask the county attorney to come forward. Did you hear the question?
About the quorum with?
Yes.
It's my understanding that the action that you're looking at, discussion and possibly taking action on, involves just Woodbury County and not necessarily Sioux Rivers. And so, if that's the case, as long as they don't get involved, I would think they'd be okay being here. It might affect something that takes place with the Sioux Rivers Board. I don't think this action that you have on the agenda would do that, but I don't think it's a conflict for them to be here with the action that you're looking at taking.
Thank you. I wouldn't have asked the question if I was aware of a public notice, but I was not aware of one, so. Item 12 from Secondary Roads, county engineer Mark Nera, includes an action item A, receiving considered bids for project number parent seven.
This project is for repairs and a replacement of one box culvert on County Road D-54 in advance of our overlay project next year. Our first bid. Our first bid is from Dixon Construction of Correctionville, Iowa. Bid bond was included. Total bid price, $168,544.75. Next bid is from Graves Construction of Spencer, Iowa. Bid bonds included. Total bid price, $317,732.32. 317,730. I can safely recommend Dixon Construction for award of the bid.
I will move that.
Second, I'll second the motion by Radig. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is approved contract for project number M-HC-17-4.
I did not get those contracts in, so I request we wait to table that.
Move to table.
I'll second the motion by Taylor to table. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is to accept an approved proposal for 220th Street Reclamation Work.
As you recall, 220th Street is our road reclamation and seal code project. We did not receive any bids for that when we took it out to letting. We are, we were able to contact mid-state reclamation. They gave us a quote under our estimate for reclaiming the base and injecting the stabilizing agent into it. I recommend approval of their quotation.
Now, on that, it showed no bond?
That's correct.
Are we required to have a bond for this kind of?
We're not required to have a bond, and for something that's under $50,000, we don't always require one for that type. We don't require a bond, for instance, for pavement marking work, which sometimes is $100,000.
Well, it seems like you're paying for protection for a small project of this nature, so.
And they have to build that into their project price.
So, we just pay for it? Yeah, okay.
So, what's the end result going to be after this reclamation and base only?
We'll end up with a project out there where we'll have, it'll be an open aggregate base, but we have found two seal code contractors to give us quotes next week. And the issue was that the two contractors, reclamation and seal code, weren't talking to each other. We found one seal code contractor in Humboldt that's willing to give us a bid now, and Ben found another one last week. He's been working the phones, trying to find somebody who can get this job for us done yet this fall.
I was just gonna ask on timeline, then, how much does this pushback, or?
We should still be able to get the job done before the end of October. The seal code quotes will be due on October 9th. We should be able to make an award that night. And then, you know, with these being a quote instead of a contract, we can act based on signing the proposal and allow them to start work almost immediately. Again, that's also under a $50,000 estimate, so. Again, it was, the two contractors weren't talking to each other to team up on the job. But by breaking it apart, we were able to find contractors who were willing to bid the work. So, we'll get it done. Seal code as opposed to asphalt, which again is a savings of about $120,000 compared to the cost of the project.
So, we went from no bids to being able to get it done within a month.
Trying. But I recommend approval of the proposal.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item D is consider approval of plans for project numbers parent 77 and 78.
This is two small-span bridge structures that are on 200th Street between Union Avenue and the Woodbury County line. Both are in structurally deficient condition, or there's no houses, landlocked between the two structures. We should be able to get both of these done very quickly on that same road. Culverts like this, they sometimes allow winter work, so we may still get this job done in 2017. It depends on the contractor and when he's available. Our late start date's going to be around April 1st on both projects. These are both projects out of the $1.3 million special project level.
Questions? I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Radig. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item E is to approve contracts for HMA Levelers 2017.
And those, total bid price on this is with Knife River Construction, $75,345.80. This is for levelers on various roads within the county.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second the motion by Radig. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 13 from the Board of Supervisors, myself, is an action item, approval of resolution thanking and commending support Sulan soldiers for their service to Woodbury County. This is during an event tomorrow, which had been the planned venue for the governor's appearance and our unveiling of Home Base Iowa and that initiative, but to accommodate the governor's schedule, we decided to make that happen at another date. And so, this item requests the Board of Supervisors to approve and sign this resolution, which I would like to read, as it is unlikely that the majority of the board will be present for this tomorrow. This is a resolution thanking and commending support Sulan soldiers. It reads, "Whereas, support Sulan soldiers is a nonprofit organization located in Woodbury County that provides numerous resources, programs, and services to military families, veterans, and active and active-duty soldiers. And whereas, the dedicated volunteers of support Sulan soldiers have been providing these invaluable services to Woodbury County's estimated 10,000 veterans and the Sulan community's estimated 18,000 veterans since the Iraqi Freedom Tour in 2007, thereby increasing the morale of the troops and military families during such deployments. And whereas, Woodbury County is an official Home Base Iowa community, and support Sulan soldiers has chosen to partner and assist Woodbury County's Home Base Iowa Initiative to help veterans and service members identify and access economic benefits and resources for an improved quality of life. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors, that the undersigned members of this board thank and commend support Sulan soldiers for their service to and partnership with Woodbury County. And be it further resolved that it is the wish of all of us signing below that the future hold only the best for this very deserving organization, support Sulan soldiers." The motion is to approve the resolution, direct the chairman to present the resolution in person at the October 4th event. I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Radig. Second by Taylor. Discussion?
That's a very good resolution, Mr. Chair. Thanks for bringing it forward, and I thank all the veterans and those who've served, many of whom are away at this time.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. We now move on to item 14 from the Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Jeremy Taylor and myself, this is for action. This is approval of a resolution to withdraw from Sioux Rivers region. I would like to be very clear with the rules that are stated at the beginning of the agendas that are before you and before the board. I expect an orderly meeting. I would request that everyone, in accordance with our rules and bylaws, be recognized by the chair before speaking. I would like the board to discuss this issue, and then I would like to open it up. Anyone and everyone who is willing to address the board will be given a chance. We do have a respectful limit of three minutes, which we've been enforcing more and more often. It used to be just the Sioux City Council that had that enforcement, but it's in order for us to not have, you know, some sort of back-and-forth argument between the audience members and the board who's sitting here, just watching. So, we appreciate your feedback, and we will welcome it later on in this agenda item. I'd like to begin, bear with me, by playing approximately one and a half minutes of audio.
Table.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, you got one?
I want to make a statement.
Two minutes.
I'll keep it to two. Based on that, and what I think is a gross inequity to Woodbury County kids in relationship to funding from Sioux County, I plan to recommend our board that we take any legal steps, including enough to withdraw from the region. I think so.
Yeah, yeah. Where are you gonna go? Where in the hell are you gonna go? That's a bunch of crap, Jeremy. You're getting a bunch of crap. That's a threat, that's a threat. You don't win, so you're gonna take it all the whole. Hold it on this letter. We did not absolutely hold down the concept of any of this. We voted down this letter as it was written. So. You make one change in there, I'll vote for it. And that is why I did not want the letter.
Let's just move on.
So, can we do what Sioux County is doing?
We've already voted out.
We don't have these license conditions, that's all you have.
Hey, move on. Order, guys. You wanted an up-and-down vote? I gave you an up-and-down vote against our judgment.
Thank you for bearing with me. I know that was uncomfortable, and it was supposed to be. That is the relationship that Woodbury County is considering leaving, and I would not like this meeting to be run this way, and it will not, as long as I sit here. I will now read the resolution and offer my introductory remarks. Again, that was the Sioux Rivers Governance Board. That is not this board, that is not any local nonprofit. It reads, "Whereas, Woodbury County is one of three member counties of the Sioux Rivers Regional Mental Health and Disability Services, formed under Iowa Code Chapter 331 and Iowa Code Chapter 28E. And whereas, mental health and disability services regions must work with service providers to ensure that mental health and disability services are available to residents of the region consistent with and pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 331 and applicable regulations. And whereas, Woodbury County has determined that the governing board of Sioux Rivers region, the Sioux Rivers region management, and the Sioux Rivers region staff have demonstrated an unwillingness to operate in a transparent and equitable manner to ensure that appropriate mental health and disability services are provided to the residents of Woodbury County, and therefore it is not in the best interest of Woodbury County residents to remain a member of the Sioux Rivers region. And whereas, the 28E agreement for Sioux Rivers region permits a county to withdraw from the Sioux Rivers region by resolution of the county's Board of Supervisors and written notice to the governing board of the Sioux Rivers region by November 15, prior to the end of the fiscal year in which the withdrawal will be effective. And whereas, Woodbury County desires to exercise its right under the 28E agreement to withdraw from the Sioux Rivers region at the end of the current fiscal year, now therefore be it resolved pursuant to the 28E agreement for Sioux Rivers region, Woodbury County shall withdraw from the Sioux Rivers region effective June 30, 2018, at the end of the current fiscal year. And that Woodbury County shall give written notice to the governing board of Sioux Rivers region no later than November 15 of this decision to withdraw and take any other necessary and appropriate actions to carry out this decision to withdraw." I would like to make very clear that we, as a county, and I believe this should center on, obviously, this is a Woodbury County board meeting, we need to, we need to speak in terms of this county. We are fully committed as a county to providing our statutory and obligatory duties to provide mental health services for our constituents, and that is why we are exploring all legal avenues, including joining another region and lobbying the legislature to allow Woodbury County to stand alone as we did before regionalization. Obviously, our population alone would satisfy a reasonable threshold for any group of smaller counties across the state operating as a single region. I would also point out some perspective. Despite being assured by the Special Assistant Attorney General and Iowa DHS consultant in an August 2016 meeting, along with the Woodbury County Attorney's Office, that Woodbury would be able to join another region, Woodbury resisted. And continue to operate with partners who, in our judgment, display a fundamental difference in regards to accountability, and who follow the spirit of the law of the 28E rather than the letter. This has resulted in improper or unprofessional procedures, and over time, I believe this region has operated in a contentious and dysfunctional manner. In the past, Sioux Rivers has in the past threatened litigation after sanctioning an informal mediation process in June 2016. I would like to emphasize, this is not a, this is not solely based on recent events or on the experience of the co-sponsor of this resolution, Supervisor Taylor, and his experience over the last few months, who I will recognize now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, I'm just gonna give some broad overviews of the reason that I think that it's in Woodbury County's best interest, and in fact, those that were charged to serve by leaving the region... region and either standing alone or petitioning to have other collaborative counties join. I'm going to give some broad and general oversight by legal counsel, because I don't want to get into personnel matters, and so I'll refrain from doing so. But I do believe that there's a lack of managerial responsibility, accountability, that I would echo our Chairman, and a lack of clarity, detail, and discussion regarding our fiduciary responsibility as budget managers for mental health funds. That's something that's incumbent upon us. And just to give you a very quick example, at one point in a most recent discussion, and I will use the most recent one, 5% of all region funding going to an organization was unbeknownst to the CEO of the region. It was a surprise. I think the oversight that we have as fiscal agent responsibility is very important. I think there's a lack of process. I think that that's very clear from the desire our budget analysts has made clear in the past for things like provider improvement grants, where you get to the end of the year and there's no process by which people and entities and providers come forward. It's haphazard. It's not right and it lacks, again, the fiscal responsibility that we have. And if you question it, just wait. Just wait if you question. And I'll give you a perfect example. When I tried to get items even on the agenda to bring, that there was a real question whether the fidelity of mental health funding, and trust me, I have been looking at what other regions do, whether that was being used in accordance with the legislature or what is often proposed by past DHS Director, and I couldn't even get on the agenda as an elected official. Until I lobbied another supervisor from another county that I have a lot of respect for to try to get on the agenda, although the provider in question already was and was already allowed at a forty-seven and a half minute presentation, which I think is good, and I think they should have all the time in the world to make that case. That's not a real good relationship. And you could hear at the end of the meeting what was not a very good relationship. And I gave an example that many times in yesteryear, I had two sitting supervisors I didn't agree with all the time. Not one time as a Chair did I keep what they wanted to propose off the agenda. Why? Because they had a right. They had a right to make known their point and I appreciated one of my Plymouth County supervisors and counterparts making that known, that of course, any elected official has a right to bring forward a proposal. But it goes to the heart of what's wrong in the region and in this relationship. There's a different set of rules on different days. So for example, Woodbury County put forward a proposal of about $34,000 and it was to fund mental health placements within juvenile detention, but we heard that is not allowed. We are not into juvenile funding. Very clearly, many other regions look at us and they're surprised that we are into this, but that was a clear line. We don't do that. Well, except on this other hand, when we do. We've had, and I go back to yesteryear with now Chairman Ung, but he was Supervisor liaison to this region, and I thought maybe just being contentious there in some manners. But I found out that the rules changed again, whether it's the region that sets the levy rate or whether it's the county, but it depends on who it's advantageous to. And I think the straw that recently broke the camel's back is yet again, even trying to get something like the backup materials onto an agenda. You know, nobody had seen that letter beforehand. I asked for all of the supervisors to be able to see the letter that we would be voting on. My goodness, how could the public know what we were taking action on? It was on the Board for information and then action. What were we even voting on? But this is typical of the lack of good governance. You will see that it's very clear what we're voting on right now for action. You all have read it, whether you agree or disagree or not, that's completely your right and of course, you will be heard and anybody can put on anything onto an agenda. And I'm sure our Chair, even if he vociferously disagrees with it, will put it on the agenda. We've offered all kinds of compromise, like not even touching the funding for this fiscal year of the particular provider in question, having one of our Plymouth County counterparts going to the school district to ask them directly, are your needs being met? Because this is about kids fundamentally. Let's not lose sight of that. Not about politics, not about organizations. Fell on deaf ears, of course, the recommendation. And that's okay. I'm willing to lose one, I'm willing to lose each time, I'm not willing to lose time and time again when it's against what's in the best interest of Woodbury County and the providers who I believe have a culture of fear in this region and who have come to us and said, if they speak their minds and if they make known what they believe, they will face funding repercussions. It's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. That's not the kind of culture that I want to have for this region. Instead of respecting that that would be the position of Supervisor Don Cass from Plymouth County, Supervisor Keith Radek from Woodbury County, and myself, that we may have a question about the legality, it was that we have a fixation with a certain provider. That was the CEO's comment. It's not true. It's not true of the Plymouth County Supervisor. It's not true of Keith Radek. It's not true of myself. Didn't even know that that provider was getting funding. I just think there's a lack of professionalism, a lack of transparency, and I think it's embarrassing in front of our providers what you heard in the very beginning. Not to mention the lack of friction that this mismanagement causes. I believe for our elected officials, I believe for our department heads, and the amount of time that we spend trying to referee what in any other organization would just be basic professionalism, decency, courtesy, and communication. We spend a whole lot of time on that and it ought not be. I'll tell you what we ought to spend time on, visiting something like the Crisis Stabilization Center and looking at the care that is given there or the Friendship House and looking at our providers and advocating for them. And so for those reasons, I'll keep my comments general, because again, I don't want to get into any personnel matters. We did address some most recently as a Governance Board, but it's time. I think it's time maybe for Sioux and Plymouth County as well, it ought to be about those that we are charged to serve. And those are my opening comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I would emphasize that, in my estimation, much of your recent questioning has been our funds being spent in a manner not allowed by Iowa Code. I'd also say that it is our desire to improve the relationships with our providers. Woodbury County has in the past made several different requests to come into compliance with proper procedures or even the 28E. The feeling, at least on my end, has been that that's been viewed as obstructionist and not playing well with others. And that's certainly not the intent of Woodbury County. Supervisor Taylor mentioned his experience over the last few months. In addition, Supervisor Radek sits on, represents Woodbury County to the Governance Board. I want to just bring this back and emphasize again that this is, this move is not solely based on recent events. It's hard to hear, sometimes it's not about you, but that's the truth for a lot of people that I believe are in this room to speak. There are, there are big gears turning with this. And in the past, I just want to center on a couple examples that are not getting too deep into those matters you mentioned, Mr. Taylor, but, you know, were discussed in the past and have built up to this point, there's been reporting on these issues before. Supervisors, Supervisor Taylor and myself, in fact, did not support the current amended 28E agreement and from May to August of 2015 worked to successfully pass a county resolution asking the region to correct 28E to say the power of taxation is left to the individual counties and not the mental health region. This is in the best interest, again, of our county. Despite corroboration from our Attorney's Office and the General Counsel of the Iowa State Association of Counties, no action has been taken to comport with Iowa law in this regard. Instead, a gentleman's agreement has, to keep the power to tax with the individual counties, has been offered by the Governance Board members to myself in the past to allay our county's concerns. However, recent open meetings of the Governance Board that I've observed have again shown other supervisors to contradict this gentleman's agreement with their own words. If it's not in, if it's not in writing, in 2016, in an extreme lack of transparency from the Governance Board leadership, the region operated without a contract with certain Sioux County employees who were formerly Woodbury County employees until caught in the act around February 2016. Our county supervisors and legal counsel, both internal and external, repeatedly requested for the Governance Board to follow the 28E past practice and the open meetings law by approving service delivery personnel contracts, even if Woodbury County was to be outvoted. That was my request. Even if I'm, even if we're going to go down, just have it in the minutes and just have it be an action item on a posted agenda. The process therefore was needlessly dramatic and confrontational, as all Woodbury County was asking for was for law and proper procedures to be followed. It went even further when the region passed a resolution setting wages for Woodbury County employees against the county's, Woodbury County's vote. And when faced with the illegality of the move and advised as such by the Community Systems Consultant, signed by DHS to the Northern Iowa Region, the Governance Board reluctantly acquiesced to Woodbury County's counter resolution rescinding it, which stated the obvious fact that Woodbury County employees of record are not regional employees for payroll purposes. The comments have been made over previous years, you know, these are things that need to be worked out at the Governance Board. That's been said by supervisors of all viewpoints and that's true. But the issue there, repeated in the resolution itself, is that in our estimation, that oversight process has not been satisfactory. And that's the reality of having to supervise, is to realize when it has not been satisfactory. There have also been needless and tenuous conflicts between Woodbury County and the region regarding the use and space allocations of the Triview Mental Health Building in Woodbury County, which was paid for with Woodbury County tax dollars. I have some other issues I'd like to bring up, but if another supervisor is really wanting to comment at this point, let me know or I'll continue.
I'm ready.
Okay.
First of all, I'll start by one thing. Anybody who knows me will tell you, I've always prided myself since the day of Flight 232. I've never lost my temper. I'm getting awful close. I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask of one of you two before this all gets going. Did we ask for extra security for tonight?
No.
I was totally dead, I was going to ask why.
Who were you told by Supervisor Potabom?
By a friend.
Okay, anonymity is interesting. Go ahead.
Next thing I would like to ask is have we applied to join another region anywhere? No. Because I'm trying to figure out the timeline on what we're doing today. First I heard about us maybe withdrawing was a couple of weeks ago. It seemed to move pretty quick. And I am going to tell you that, from what I've seen, and I have a different lifetime that I lived a long time ago where my job was to settle disputes between people. People usually that weren't very happy. And I thought I got pretty good at detecting things. But I'm going to tell you that to me, right now, I'm embarrassed and a little bit ashamed because what this looks like, and after hearing a little bit of the tape there, is the typical basketball court thing where I lost the game, so I'm taking the ball and going home. That upsets me. Because I think, and you said it earlier, and I fully agree, we should have our eye on the people we serve. And to me, that's the kids. And again, I'm not going to say that I doubt your integrity, but when you say it's not about one organization, it looks like it is, to me. And to me, that's just wrong to use this platform up here, whether it be for personal vendetta or a long time personal problem.
A point of order, Mr. Chair. We have in our bylaws not assigning or questioning motive, which is exactly what Supervisor Potabom's comments are doing. And I'd ask for that point of order to be weighed in upon.
And you're absolutely right.
Please be careful.
That is what I'm doing.
Well, you know what? You are in violation of the bylaws then, and Mr. Chair, I'd appeal to you to...
I cannot fire you, Mr. Potabom, but you are out of order.
You're not sure you're big enough to push me into a corner, so I'm just going to say very simple that I'm embarrassed of this thing because that's just what it looks like. And I think that's just flat wrong.
I would like to follow up with some of those comments. Again, I cannot emphasize enough how much this is not based upon recent events. It is, as Supervisor Taylor said, the straw that broke the camel's back. This has been openly discussed by now three Chairman of this Board, the potential to withdraw from the Sioux Rivers Region to more aptly provide for the mental health needs of our constituents. The issue that has a lot of interest to it tonight, of course, is the effect upon the Sanford Center. And as one of the organizations affected by this move, I think it's fair to bring up some comments there, instead of tiptoeing around and pretending it does not exist. The question recently has been, are funds being spent in a manner consistent with Iowa Code? Mental health dollars for the diagnosis and treatment of mental health services. We have, of course, Core and Core Plus, and we have the question of where does this fit in? I was just as surprised as anyone when I heard that, you know, from one of the committee reports from Mr. Taylor, that the CEO of the region was unaware of this particular funding. I don't know who that's on, I wasn't on the Board. I'm not on the regional Board. But we are acting as a county on this. I want to be very clear, to clear up any feelings out there in the community, and I know that my word is only worth what you decide to make it. The Sanford Center does good work. The Sanford Center is involved in K through fifth grade, after-school programs, they're involved in ACT prep, they're involved in gang prevention primarily. The question of should mental health dollars be the appropriate avenue for that funding is a legitimate question. It's something that we're investigating. It's something that we have, are in doubt of it being a core service or even a legally acceptable practice. We've done our due diligence. Now, I, I was told by the Executive Director of the Sanford Center that they feel the rules have changed, that recently there have been some events, and whatever motive you want to ascribe as a public, you are free to do so, as far as the how and the why and the when. My response then and now is, the rules in my opinion were unfair to begin with for the Sanford Center. When you, when you hear about, when you, you know, when you see a transport vehicles for kids, when you see ACT prep, when you hear talk about after-school programs, character building, noble things that many, you know, many nonprofits do, but that the Sanford Center has a long history of doing, albeit with different funding sources primarily governmental, the question becomes, why does the current MOU with the school district provide for $30,000 of funding from the school district and $260,000 of funding from the Sioux Rivers Mental Health Region, which is facing the drawdown of its reserves, while at the same time provides for provider improvement grants, which by the way, have... at the same time provides for provider improvement grants, which, by the way, have a very, not much of a process to them, I'll put it that way? I, as supervisors and as government officials, we are tasked with the appropriate use of tax dollars. That's why it's an important question to ask. But I don't like this feeling in the community that has, in my talks with, with people at the center, feel like, you know, the cannons are, are at them, and of course, the board feels like the cannons are at us. This is, this is a misunderstanding of the intent of the question. You can believe whatever you want about the person asking it, but the intent of the question is right. The intent of the question is about stability. It's about legality, and it's a reasonable question. Why does the Sioux City School District, with orders of magnitude greater in funding, millions of dollars for at-risk funding, at-risk budget, put in almost a tenth of what mental health dollars are going towards? You know, and I understand the argument of, of prevention. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And mental health dollars to this organization or something like it, even to a church outreach group, may prevent mental illness in the future. But that's a very general statement. That applies to a lot of noble nonprofits in the area. If, if our residents are going to be taxed, and if they're going to be taxed by Sioux and Plymouth County, God forbid, against the vote of Woodbury County, I want to make sure that those dollars are being purposed for what we're telling our taxpayers they're being purposed for: mental health. It is no stretch to say that when you hear about after-school programs, that impacts the realm of schools. And so I'm publicly calling upon the Sioux City School Board to put their money where their mouth is, and if this is a noble program, as they have expressed, to the regional board, then step up. This is not right to, at the very worst, conceal and at the very best, with the best of intentions, direct this funding through mental health dollars, the way it's currently being done, without a discussion of who bears the most to gain as, as an entity, and what parent would not understand use of their tax dollars in a pool of at-risk funding going to any organization that deals with at-risk programs. So again, because it was the subheading on the front page article about, about this ish, this withdrawal being based upon this unfortunate casualty of, of a greater conflict, I have to just be honest and say it's not, it's not always about, it's not always about you, it's not always about me. Again, this is about the, the appropriate use of mental health dollars. And I can see, from seeing what the Sanford Center does and visiting, I can see the work is beneficial to the school district. Sioux City School District. Before receiving comments from members of the public, I would like to make sure that Board, the Board of Supervisors has weighed in. The two remaining supervisors, if you'd like to speak.
I guess I'd bring up that this is not just a, this region issue. There are four other counties looking at leaving their regions recently, and they've met with their legislators, bringing up issues they've had, because the law isn't necessarily clear on the process that follows. And I guess my question's too, since you guys have met together on this, and it's now an open, public discussion. As a plan for us, are you going to advise we join another region, try to be our own, like Polk? Or are we going to force some kind of legislative action where we can become our own personally? And I'm going to just say what I'd like to see. And I think this is part of the issue we have in our region, is that we're the big county with the big city, and we have a lot of needs, and a lot of our dollars go into it. The other two counties have very little needs comparatively, and with this equalization, it's going to force them to pay a lot more for it. In fact, Plymouth is going to see a huge increase in their levy over the next few years because they're going to have to get to a parity level with Woodbury. You know, I don't know if that's necessarily fair to them either. I think it would be beneficial for smaller population counties to be in regions, but not necessarily with somebody like us. So I guess that's my comment on that. I have another question, but I wanted to hear what you guys were thinking.
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much. And it's a good question, Supervisor Rattick, and your points are all well-taken. One of the things that, of course, a lot of smaller counties need those larger counties in order to be able to make that region, per the legislation, but where Plymouth and Sioux go, obviously, would be a decision up to them. We can disclose that we have made initial overtures, or I have at least sought to see what other regions offer as far as services, and to see if there is a dialogue that may be had in the future. We are seeking to explore all options, and that would be to include standing alone, if that is a potential possibility, but it, it's one of those that's going to have to work procedurally as well. So I know that's not a very definitive...
Sure.
... answer to your question. I just know what's not working, rather than what may in the future.
Well, and I'm afraid that we join another region and find similar problems myself. That's just my fear.
If I can respond to that.
Sure.
In looking at some of the governance and some of the operational values and procedures, I think that you'll find a difference. And I think that's one of the reasons that we're leaving is that if I say we have a bit of a reputation as a region, I don't necessarily know if it's a good one. And I think that there are regions that have a better cooperative, collaborative, communicative relationship, that do see that they are working together instead of pulling apart, that they can get things on the agenda, and they can get their audit presented sooner than a month or two, and, and that they can have some of the information that you've requested, Supervisor Rattick, that has not been forthcoming. So I'm just saying that I think that there are others out there that you would be surprised by. So that would be my response.
And then I guess my follow-up, and Marty touched on it too, but what, what do we see as a timeline? Obviously, we have to have this notice by November, what was it, 15th? And then our budget would go to July, so we're talking, you know, we probably want something done within three months or planned within three months?
Well, I think...
Really, yes.
Yeah. I think the ball starts rolling, my hope is tonight, with the affirmative motion of this board, and then all set into a series. And what I hope is going forward, that from, I know it's going to be hard, but I've spoken about this a little bit, is that from this time forward, we're going to have to, as best as we can, work together in this relationship until we can find one that works better for, I hope, everybody. I hope everybody in Sioux and Plymouth as well.
You know, looking at the overall budget, 6.619 million, what is the actual Woodbury County percentage of that? Is it 60, 65? Where are we at?
The maximum we can levy is 4.9 million total of that. We are, under the new legislation, we are at 3.15, I believe.
And that's because of the, we're at 3...
Based on per capita.
And we're at 3.15, though, because of the using of reserves, though, correct?
Well, that'd be the maximum with or without reserves.
Okay.
Maximum the region, this particular region levy is 4.9 million. It was a little different where we levied more, but now with the new legislation, it's been equalized more where each county, where each county has the same per capita, so ours actually went down from 3.5 down to 3.1. That's the maximum. We are not levying that at the moment.
And in my conversations with Dennis, joining another region would have the practical effect of overall lowering the maximum levy and regionally.
Yes, that's why I've been told from another region. That's correct.
But of course, without going through a budget process, it's impossible to say exactly how many dollars, just like we can't say right now how many dollars would be expended.
That's correct.
Other board members?
I have a question for Dennis, if I can get on what he has.
Yeah.
From what I was told, when, again, I've said all along since I got here, I hadn't completely got my hands around this region idea anyway, that the money that's generated for the region, each county has their taxing authority. Do they all spend the same amount that they bring in?
That is probably a pretty good question, because we may pay a certain percent, but do we receive the same percentage of services? Probably not, because as a region, we do share. As a region, we do share, not as individual county. We all put it into the pot, and that pot is diversified out to where the, you know, requirements are needed.
Well, and the reason I ask that is because what I was told was that our revenue percentage was 63.1%. I believe that so far. I'm not positive. And that our service use percentage was 72.9%.
Okay, and on a percentage of what we put in on taxes, I agree with that probably, but on services, I don't know. Breakdown.
Let me think here. Where was it going? Oh, I did want to bring up something just for public fact then as well. Before coming to the Board of Supervisors, I had discussed with Matthew about what I thought, you know, the importance of keeping the region together, and he says, well, you kind of have to be there to understand it. And so after being elected, I was given the gift of being on the, the board, the, the region board. And I got to say, it was an eye-opening experience as far as how different governments work, and going through a budget process that was as vague as what it was, very little information, especially when it came to provider grants, and I felt like we became the Christmas budget there with that, you know, but no necessar, no rules, no standards, no anything on, on how that was dispersed. Information has been requested, still not received to this day. Just for the public record, that's been my experience. And when I disagreed with you maybe last November, December, I have to say I am in agreement today that it's not necessarily a healthy relationship for Woodbury County to be on this board or this region. And I, I think it would be better for the smaller counties in the long run as well to, you know, be in similar-sized county regions. And it's, I mean, I have no animosity about this. I just, I just don't think it's right. I don't think this is the best thing for Woodbury County, and that's my personal opinion, so...
I would echo the, the comments on budget detail. For my part, one of my first conversations with the budget director after taking office and several after that had to do with more detailed budget information being needed, necessary, requested, what have you, from, from the region. And it's just, it may not be intentionally contentious. It may just be a difference in, in culture, a difference in procedure, difference in, in how meetings are run in, in counties like Woodbury County, where we have more of a spotlight than other counties may, and that's just the reality. So I want to open it up now. If there is someone in the audience who would like to address the board, do not come up here to provoke an argument. Please only come up here to state your facts or your opinion. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Monique Scarlett. My residence is 3718 Jackson Street here in Sioux City, Iowa. Two are elected, and I emphasize elected, county board of supervisors. Let it be clear that I stand before you today with facts. No emotional rhetoric, Mr. Taylor, as you've stated, that so many of us have, but I am focused on the facts. I want to ask this board, how many of you have visited the Sanford Center? Okay? And how many of you have sat down with our director? Okay? And how many of you had a conversation with the young people at the Sanford Center? Okay? Today's young people? Anyone, today's young people?
Mine was a couple of months ago.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for that. The fact is that the recent focus on the Sanford Center and the funding from the Sioux Rivers for Mental Health is a political plot. The fact is that the Sanford Center has frontline providers and outreach workers that have sufficiently and diligently done their job with the mental health. The fact is that there is a huge conflict, and always has been, with Mr. Jeremy Taylor, who has initiated, I call this witch hunt, toward the center because he is the only county board and also employed by the Sioux City Community School District, and also plays a part on the Sioux Rivers Board. It may not be illegal, but it is a conflict of interest. The fact is that the children that attend and receive necessary help from the Sanford Center are the ones who suffer. The children suffer, the families suffer, and therefore, our community suffers. The fact is that my grandmother, the late Florence Johnson English, who devoted her life to helping children, always asked, "Why are you trying to fix something that is not broken?" The fact is, I stand for the future of the children and all the programs that the Sanford Center offers, and I pray that you see this for what it is. It is political and not about the people. The people must come before politics. We're asking today that you do the right thing for the children and that the need of the Sanford Community Center. I do applaud you for playing that audio earlier. I was present at that meeting in La Marse. And I like how you had conveniently set that up and did not hear the entire or allow the audience to hear the entire conversation and how that went about. Because as a citizen of the Woodbury County community, I was embarrassed by the behavior and the threats of Mr. Taylor toward the Sioux Rivers Board. I am embarrassed by all the opinions that I hear and little facts, and I'm also disappointed that all of the opinions and what we think will work are not the facts, and they are not true. And I do agree with you, there has been a lot of untruth in the media, but I want you to remember the facts. That is how we built the Sanford Center, on the facts. That is how the Sanford Center will survive on the facts, with or without your support. And we hope that you, as elected officials, will take those children and their families in consideration, other than looking at the dollar bill and the effect that that dollar bill is having on those children that attend the Sanford Center. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I would just very briefly say, I don't think anyone would ask me to play the entire meeting. Supervisor Taylor, you may respond if you would like.
Sure. I absolutely agree with everything that was said, as far as this has become politicized, and we ought to be looking at the children. So I absolutely agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Connie Barrett. I happen to be the advocate that is appointed to represent the mental health individuals that are under court commitment. Iowa Code 229 is my job description, and if you don't know me, it's because I haven't come before you, particular gentlemen, because I've been perfectly kind of happy and satisfied with what's been going on for the individuals that I, I advocate for. The boards before you knew me because I was there pretty regularly. I have not felt a need to be, to here because I'm satisfied with what's been going on. In my job, I listen to individuals. Sometimes it isn't part of my job, but families also have a way of... Sometimes it isn't part of my job, but families also have a way of contacting me. If, and they really let me know if they're not happy and things are not going well. I haven't been getting as many phone calls recently as I have in the past. That tells me that things are working pretty well. Now, it was only about a year and a half ago that I actually, this became a county job, and they had to find a place for me. So where they found a place was happens to be in the building that you were talking about, and that's where I've been housed. Because I am very busy, I don't busy myself with what's going on in the office. I stay attentive to what's going on. But last week, I was, just happened to be here at the meeting because I saw people I knew coming, and I thought, well, this is going to be an interesting meeting. I want to be here. Now, I heard a statement made that I thought was very, just upset me because I didn't see where it was coming from. It was a point of view of one individual, and he made a statement, and there was a lot of people from the community here that heard a negative statement about the place that I get, that kind of coordinates the funding. I've been invited to sit in on their meetings. I find them to be, the counties that I work with are very diverse. And over the years that I've done this, I've had seven different counties that I've advocated for and then for various reasons do not any longer advocate for. So I have a broad understanding of the different counties. I've been doing this job over 20 years, probably close to 25. I don't keep track because I don't want to. When I go to the meetings, I don't find them to be argumentative. They're very collaborative, they're transparent, they're polite to one another. So where this anonymity, this anger comes from seems to just be in certain areas. I don't, I don't see a system that's broken. So I'm trying to figure out, what is it? Because I, again, I'm kind of out of the, out of the sketch here. I don't really know what caused this rift that is happening that's causing you to want to, to, you know, there's a word that you've used to disband or get out of the region. It seems strange to me why it came about. I don't see the services have, I don't see it happening in the community that people are upset with the services right now. And in the past, I've seen that, and I have a feeling that I may see it again, and you'll probably see me again if I get upset with what I think is going on. Any questions of me? Because I, I do a lot of different things. You may not understand what my job is. Any questions? I have 25 years of experience working with mental health budgets, so I do believe that I could probably answer questions.
I would say it's, it's good, good to hear that there is little impact at the services level. Certainly, we don't want these issues to impact the actual delivery, even though there may be a transition. So that's not unwelcome news, is all I'm saying. Mr. Rixner?
Jim Rixner, 114 Midville Avenue, retired from the Mental Health Center. Here as an advocate and as a citizen. Let me reinforce with, I'm going to comport myself accordingly, Mr. Hall. I like that word. I'm going to fall off very quickly on what Connie Barrett just said. We have two, two members of the region here and the other, there are two more and the two up there. My experience working with the region was that these four, the representatives of Sioux County and Plymouth County have big hearts and good minds and care about people. And I am adamant in saying that. Regardless of what happens in this process, these are good people who consistently said they were concerned about the well-being of the people that they serve. And they said it consistently, they act consistently, and they honored their words. Knowing each and every time a decision is made at Sioux County and Plymouth County, it generally is to the benefit of Woodbury County because we're the big player in all this. You all know that. So the disparagement of the people involved from Sioux County and Plymouth County concerns me greatly. But let me speak to the issue and speak to the issue of what you're all doing. Number one, you all know I'm a Democrat. I'll say I'm a Democrat, so we'll get that out of the way. And this is not a partisan comment. You're doing exactly the same thing that the House and Senate did with Obamacare. They wanted to trash it with no plan, and you're doing exactly the same thing with this. You don't know what region you're going to end up in. You don't know if a region wants you. If you go on your own, you end up like Polk County. Go down and talk to Polk County providers and people about what's happened in Polk County. Talk to your legislators. Find out that they had to go back to the House and Senate and ask for $2 million to survive the function on their own. So be careful about what you think is going to happen. Be careful about who you think is going to accept you after the track record you've already established in the Sioux Region, because the shoe fits on both feet, on all three feet. So just be careful about what assumptions you're making. If you in fact withdraw from the Sioux Rivers Region, you darn well better make sure you know where you're going, how you're going to get there, and what's going to happen. You're also talking about processes that none of you understand. The legislature has nothing to do with this. Representative Hall is sitting here, and he can confirm it or not confirm it. This has to do with the Mental Health Commission and the Department of Health and Human Services, DHS. They make the decisions and the concurrence about what region you end up in. If you choose to leave, you choose to leave. But you need the concurrence of the Mental Health Disability Commission as the legal entity that allows you to go somewhere else. I was on that commission in the past, and I assure you that if you go down there and attempt to talk to the commission with a motion to leave Sioux Rivers Region, I will be there, and I will assure you that I will speak against it. Unless you have an absolute sure plan that number one guarantees all the services you're now delivering to the people of Woodbury County, as they are now being delivered, all of them. And if you can't do that, the commission should not allow you to withdraw. And finally, you have a fiduciary responsibility to the Woodbury County taxpayers, and I'm one of them. You have no plan. You're going to pull out of the region, you're going to, you know, rest all your hope on Mr. Butler, who's brilliant. But there may not be enough money to do the things you're now doing once you leave the region. And I plead with you to be darn sure that you do have the money to do it. Because if we have to cut back one program, whether it's the Sanford Center or any other program, as a result of this move, then you should individually be held accountable for that. So understand the process. Make sure that what you do doesn't end up creating so much of a problem that you have to raise taxes in Woodbury County just to continue to do what you're now doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say the process is messy. That's why we waited practically three years. This, the comments that were made echo some of how things tend to go at the regional level and why Supervisor Raddig had his change of heart after simply being in that environment. You have, you have a Woodbury County Board of Supervisors somewhat chided for making disparaging comments while someone makes disparaging comments about Woodbury County representatives. And that's their right. And if you want to be a Democrat and do it at the same time, that's fine. I mean, should we all list who we voted for here?
I have disparaged any of you. Who have disparaged?
Okay, the comments will, the comments are recorded. Mr. Hall?
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Chris Hall. I live at 3246 Douglas Street here in Sioux City. Following Mr. Rixner's comments, I'll step in just with at least a little bit of an ear to my thoughts on this, first as a citizen, a resident of Woodbury County, but also somebody that has an ear to the legislature and has at least spent the last couple of days reviewing state code. For those of you who are at least approaching this issue in a very practical sense, I understand most of you are people who would first look at a spreadsheet and ensure that your duty to Woodbury taxpayers breaks out even in a planned way that if you are to leave the Sioux Rivers Region, whatever region you do join, or if you are doing so as a standalone county, there is an expectation laid out in state code that you are doing so both to provide the same level of service and to do so in a cost-efficient manner. So should you adopt this resolution tonight, it would imply that you also have thought through the next steps. And I think that one of the members of the board has at least raised that question. Supervisor Raddig asked earlier what the next steps are, what you feel would be appropriate after adopting this resolution. And maybe my comments tonight are to urge you as a board to just pump the brakes a little bit, give it some time, figure out these conversations, whether it's with the Sioux City School Board or with your fellow members of the Sioux Rivers Region, how to have these conversations in a practical form rather than rush to a judgment or adopt a resolution that may put Woodbury's taxpayers as well as the consumers of mental health services in a precarious place. There are 19 core services that are required by state code. There is only, by adopting this resolution, I guess, the point is that you're setting yourself on track with only two options available. As Mr. Rixner also pointed out, you may have those options laid out before you, but they are not necessarily yours to make. These are things that must be approved by the State Mental, State Human Services Commission. Option one that you could head down the track of would be serving as an exempted county and serving as a standalone county. Of 99 counties in the state right now, there is only one, and that is Polk County. Their property tax base and their population are significantly different than that of Woodbury. They are a very unique case in the state, and I think the fact that they are the only exempted county and only standalone is a significant thing to consider. Option two would be that you head down the track of joining another region. There are two available to us by way of the counties that we're contiguous with. You would still have to ensure, first forsake of the Mental Health Commission, or the Human Services Commission, that the level of services that would be provided and also the cost efficiencies would continue. Assuming that you're able to guarantee those, assuming that one of these two regions actually wants to accept Woodbury, right now, even adopting this resolution tonight, there is no signal that 28E agreements, there is no signal that memorandums of understanding, or that public conversations, rather than private conversations done on an individual level, have taken place. It is setting Woodbury in a precarious direction. And also, if we were to be accepted by one of those two regions that are available to us, there's no guarantee, and I'm guessing that most of you have not looked at the numbers on a spreadsheet, that Woodbury would end up paying less or receiving more services. It could be in fact the opposite, that even if you are able to work with these people in good faith, find a way for them to take us into their region. Woodbury might end up paying a larger amount, or we could end up receiving a smaller share of services. As a resident, as a taxpayer, and also somebody who is concerned with mental health consumption, being as accessible and available to citizens as it possibly can be, those are things that I ask in a practical sense, have they been thought out? Have the steps been taken? There are no agreements, memorandums of understanding, or 28E agreements that have been put in place, yet rushing to adopt this resolution tonight will put Woodbury in a precarious position and one that doesn't guarantee any good outcome whatsoever.
Thank you. No, 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 excuse me. He had asked.
I'm just curious, Representative Hall, is juvenile mental health services a core service or not?
I'm, I've got the list of 19 core services in here. All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, you have a question that you have posed to the current region you're in. It may be a very reasonable question to pose, and it may be up to you as an elected official to use tact and relationships in the way that you see fit. I'm saying if you adopt this resolution tonight, the next steps after it guarantee that you must either, as a standalone county, provide these 19 services.
I get all, I get all that. Is a very simple question because you have a lot of expertise coming from the legislature. Is this a core service that we're mandated to provide? That's all I want to know is.
Repeat, which service?
Juvenile mental health services in the schools. Is this a core service?
I know that juvenile mental health services, and I don't have their specific code laid out in front of me, but there is administrative code that pertains to them. I don't know whether it is a required core service or not.
Okay, it's not. So here's the other question. Polk County has a, a lot of differences, obviously, on their tax effect. The other thing, are you aware that we actually put forward a proposal to keep at almost the same level of funding for those mental health services in the Sioux City Community School District? Were you aware that we approached? And because I actually believe in your statements of compromise that a Plymouth County supervisor and I put forward, were you aware that we asked the Sioux City Community School District that we have a means to provide that service above and beyond?
Whether or not I'm aware of that is pretty immaterial to the argument that I'm making. I'm arguing for something and making a point of what comes next and whether that has been adequately thought through, even though you were adopting a resolution tonight that will have some obligations that come with it. What you have done to this point in the past as a citizen, as an observer, I'm not sure of, and I'm not sure that it really relates to the point I'm trying to make.
But I just wanted to respectfully make that point because it seemed to be insinuating that, oh, you're rushing to this, you haven't tried for the last two months to do these things that the good Plymouth County supervisor jointly in conversation tried to do. And the other thing is, I just think it's difficult to engage in another 28E agreement and join another region and have those public conversations premature to the dissolution of this one. And I know you understand that as far as some of the mechanics, but I do appreciate the, the comments and the ideas.
Yes, and I appreciate that also. I want to make sure that, I say respectfully to all of you, thank you for letting me speak. It's, there are similar things in local government as there are at state government, and one of the things that I always try to make sure is that it doesn't get adversarial. These are things that involve taxpayers and citizens, and it's important that it's discussed in that form. I'm trying to make a point that I think it is of the best interest of Woodbury County residents and mental health consumers in our region that the cart is not put before the horse. And I think that adopting this resolution tonight, where it could be tabled, it could be revisited once further conversation has taken in a public forum, or maybe those conversations with the school board and some of the concerns that you've raised earlier, they could proceed down another track that doesn't necessarily obligate Woodbury in the form that this would.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to bring up, you know, the fact that we, we can't discuss what we're going to do before this meeting. It's not legal. So we have to abide by open meetings laws. And that's why I brought up the question here today. What do you recommend is the course of action? And I put out my preference, and I think it would be best, in my opinion, for Woodbury County to stand alone. We'd have the most supervision over the dollar spent. Now, one thing I don't know, and I can't know for some odd reason, is what providers in Woodbury County receive from the Sioux Rivers Region. I've asked. I want to know what providers are receiving money from the Sioux Rivers Region. I wanted to know what dollar amount. I wanted to know what services are provided by those providers. And that information is not given to me at this point. It was a simple question brought up during the budget because our budget lines are so vague, it just as well say stuff. So to say, you know, what kind of plan can we have going forward? It'd be nice to have some of the information, and we don't, I don't know, we don't have any access to it, I guess, even as a board member in the Sioux Rivers Region. I guess I could go to each mental health provider that is here in Woodbury County and ask, okay, so what do you guys receive at Siouxland Mental Health? What do you guys receive over here? And I'd take their word for it.
Thank you.
I'm Dick Owens, 1400 Innen Hills Drive, Unit 102. If you give me more time than three, I'll answer your question. I can give you every one of them. I can tell you every county that's put into it. And if you want to hear them, I'll give it to you. But before I do that, I want to look at, instead of sitting here and all the things that we do, if my figures are right, we should be sending a thank you to Plymouth and Sioux County. If you look at our figures, and again, I think they're right, our county percentage revenue that we put in is like 63%. The services we're getting out of it is 73%. Those two counties are paying 10% of our mental health costs. So you drop out, that's a million bucks. So you drop out, that's a million bucks. We don't have a plan, we don't know where we're going to go, or you're going to come up with a million bucks. And the next thing I looked at had something to do with the level of ability, and this I'm pretty shady on, but based on the ability of thirty-point-four-two per capita, I don't see how you're going to come up with a million dollars. That tells me, as a taxpayer, two things. Number one, you got to cut services. And your question, Keith, is right. You have twenty different groups getting money. You've got a million dollars. Who's going to get hit? I can tell you, based on the past, it's going to be those category-one prevention programs. I'm a taxpayer, and I do research. When you look at a comprehensive mental health plan, there's four parts, and one of them is prevention, category-one. That's what the Sanford Center does. You can go back, Mr. Rickner talked about the mental health at the state, and if you go back and start looking at the reports, look at twenty thirteen, look at twenty fifteen, look at twenty sixteen, if you don't believe what I'm saying, do your homework. As a taxpayer, I want prevention. I want treatment. I want the comprehensive health system. When you start taking away prevention, you're not going to be one million behind within five years, because prevention, when you start keeping kids out of prison and so forth, the big hit's going to be five years down the road. So you start looking, and I'm using the very minimal things, I've studied over thirty different projects in the United States, none of them are exactly the same, but the results are the same. When you start looking at the kinds of dollars you save, when you average them out, some of them save a hundred dollars per dollar spent, that's drug programs. When you average them out, it's twenty-five dollars spent, or saved for every dollar spent. As a taxpayer, I like that. If you only use one dollar spent, two saved, one dollar spent in five, start doing the figures. You're going to save over, even in one year, if it's the latter two, for every three hundred, you're going to save six hundred. You use the other, take five times that, it's one-point-five million. My thinking, and I'm going to sit down, is very simple. Let's make a decision based on facts. Let's not make a figure based on how I feel about people. We're not doing that. We're not ready to pull out of this thing. And again, I close with this, I want to thank Plymouth and Sioux County for paying ten percent of the mental health of our, our county. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I want to respond briefly before. The fact is that the current picture of the regional budget is not sustainable. The board has expressed this during our budget process. The, the budget, including one-time expenses, is more than the region can legally levy in property taxes. And I understand the reason for that partially has been to spend down reserves in compliance with state law, saying regions must have a, no more than twenty to twenty-five percent, depending upon your population and reserves. But to say that services, to issue a, you know, a prophecy that services will be cut, it's not so much built on fact as it is built on the reality that, no matter what happens, Sioux Rivers Region, if it was to stay a region, would need to change some of its spending practices. And that's the reality that, as supervisors, elected officials, it's not always comfortable to say, be honest, it's not always comfortable for a congressman to say, we're twenty trillion dollars in debt, and so this well-meaning program isn't going to get funded. That's an extreme example, of course, but it's not always fun to say, the picture, you know, the reality and the picture is not as you say it is, because there's other forces at work. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So I'm curious, if you could help me out, Dennis, were you ever contacted with a question? You're the budget analyst for Woodbury County, correct?
Correct.
Are you the fiscal agent for Sioux Rivers Region?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Were you contacted to distribute information to this board that references Mr. Owens' claim that sixty-three percent is what Woodbury County puts in and seventy-two percent is what it draws out? Were you contacted by Mr. Owens, yes or no?
No.
Were you contacted by anybody on this board for that information, yes or no?
No.
Okay, so Mr. Potabam, or Supervisor Potabam, could you tell us where you did receive that information from? Because it comports with what Mr. Owens says, and you will say sixty-three and seventy-two percent. So if our budget analyst didn't provide it, who, where did that come from?
I stopped down at the Sioux Rivers Office.
And, and who did you ask for that information from?
I can't tell you. It was prepared before I got there, and I'd asked him, I called down and asked if I could get.
Somebody hand you that information, or do you know who it was, or is it somebody?
A lot of the ladies at work, I don't remember which one handed it to me.
Okay. So that would just be something I want to know, I want the public to know, and to be aware of. Our budget analyst does not necessarily concur, may, I don't know that he was ever asked. Our fiscal agent for Sioux Rivers Region was never asked. In fact, there's a March two thousand seventeen audit. Anybody that sits on the Sioux Rivers Region Governance Board, raise your hand if you've seen that audit? I have, because I just requested it. That audit has not been delivered to the region. So I just think we need to be careful when we make claims and we take them for fact, because we want to be about facts, that if sixty-three percent is what Woodbury County puts in and gets seventy-two percent out, we don't know who that even came from, somebody, I appreciate that, not our budget analyst, not the fiscal agent, not the audit that the regional governance board hasn't seen in six months. And you should ask the question, why, I mean, we've got some media here, why would you not receive your own audit? Six months' time. Oh, there may be some raised eyebrows in the room in the back as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Gill has a comment.
I just want to, excuse me, Dennis, could you answer this question Mr. Raddick, Supervisor Raddick brought up? I don't understand how he wouldn't know what providers are being paid.
The only way we'd know, because we operate with Sioux Rivers, the same we do with the city assessor, they send a requisition over to accounts payable, they do issue checks, send it back, we do not have the claims in our office. And the only way we'd know, way we'd know is if we pull it by vendor, we would not know what the services were for Woodbury, Plymouth, Sioux, or whoever, because we don't have the detail, it's just lumped up.
But the information is available publicly, vendors being paid.
I believe so, yes. Because we could pull it up by vendor.
Just wanted to clarify that.
As far as I know.
And you're saying, just to understand, Mr. Gill, you're saying that Supervisor Raddick could pull the claims and begin to add those up as far as in this past fiscal year in order to discern that?
Yes, if he knew the vendors that he was looking for, he could get those, he could get that information.
Quite a, quite a bit of work for a supervisor to sit down with all those spreadsheets, but I agree that after a while, taking all the time and adding them up would be, but we would hope that that information would be more readily available, I think.
I'm just concerned, we're the fiscal agent, and they said that you couldn't get that information. I want folks to know that it's publicly available.
I was never.
It's not the easiest way to get.
Correct. Well, the. I was never asked by Keith. Keith went to the region CEO, who, and out there, who has all the records. Yes, we issued the checks, we can tell them, like, great plains, we can say how much was issued out there, but we cannot tell, you know.
But you understand my point?
Yes.
I'm just saying, okay, thank you.
Because Dennis could not provide the information that's needed, and the budget that is provided to you is the same budget that's posted online, correct?
Correct.
And that budget would say things like residential care facility, nine-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. That doesn't specify a provider, or a list of providers, or dollar amount for those.
No, at the budget time, that is not provided in the budget format they have, they do not break it down.
And simple requests for that information have not been fulfilled.
Thank you for patiently waiting.
Uh, my name is Jerry Fields. I live at sixteen sixty-six West Thirty Street. And I guess I've been listening, I've been here before and listened to things. It seems like all of you are in a very big disarray. You can't get information, you said that you can't get the information you need from, and you want from, what is it, the Sioux River, or whatever. What do you figure mental health is? I mean, seriously, what is, what is, what do you consider mental health is? That's what.
Everyone, everyone in the room would define that.
What I'm just saying, this is how you got silent, so everybody gets quiet. You were talking about you couldn't get the information, and then you said, basically, that I guess I could go around and ask everybody what they were getting out of this, and you almost made it like it was a distrust, that they wouldn't tell you the truth. But isn't that what you should do? Wouldn't you go out and investigate? You do it, she should do it, everybody should go out and ask. If you don't get the ques, if you don't know the answers, then go out and ask questions of the people that are actually serving, serving, serving. The people that are asking, receiving these, this monies, that's what it's all about. It gets to be, then you play this stupid tape from the end, it sounds like, it almost sounded like a Donald Trump speech. Why didn't you just play the whole thing through and just take a little part of it where everybody start arguing? It gets to be kind of strange. You got a job to do. You manage the money. Go out and ask people. I didn't even know where the money come from. You got a newspaper here, you got an editorial page. You, you almost make Sanford Center, that's almost the bastard calf of the whole thing. The man said that they tried to prevent people from getting in trouble. They do a job. Most of these places do a job, they're not there just to get a job. They are out there to help people. We elected you. And no one can sit there and among yourselves, you mean to tell me these few people can't get in a room and come to a consensus on anything? Democrats and Republicans, that's what split the country today. My God, everybody kind of, get together, and you don't even have a plan, like he said. Where are you going? It's time for you guys to get your shit together.
Watch it, sir.
All right, get your crap together. How's that one? It comes from the same place. Thank you very much.
I almost made it the whole day without someone mentioning Trump. Almost. Please.
Laura Lee, sixteen zero eight Castleman Street. I'm a Sioux City resident and a Woodbury County lifelong taxpayer, and I don't have any children in school, but I don't mind supporting the tax base in this community. So I want to make that clear, because I've heard people say people would be upset about that. But if we don't pay taxes, those folks don't get paid. You don't get paid as a school employee, and, you know, the air guard and the supervisor either, so, you know, let's, let's be honest about those things. What I want to say is, when we talk about mental health too, we're also talking about behavior management, anger management, social skills, those soft skills that employers are saying they need from children, from their, their employees when they come in. And I believe the outreach workers do a great deal of that, also focusing on those kids with communication skills. So I think those are some things that also happen. The other thing I want to say, and I'm not going to be up here for three minutes, I'm concerned that if we, Woodbury County, withdraw from that Sioux Rivers Region, what is going to, how is it going to impact the people that are Woodbury County residents that are receiving services in Plymouth County and Sioux County? And what about those folks that receive, that receive services in Woodbury County from Plymouth and Sioux County? Will that distort that? I mean, will, will those folks no longer be able to receive those services? We have, there's the, the facility in Primgar, there's a facility in Lamar's, the Pride Group, and I know they have a facility here, but a lot, many of our people go, many of our Woodbury County residents go to those other residential facilities for stabilization, and also, they've been very successful in working with those folks. So I think before you make a decision tonight, please take time to study the issues, get all of your information together, your budget information, your provider information, the numbers that you're serving, the people that you're paying services, that we are paying services for. Get that information, gather that, and study it before you make a quick decision. Two months is not enough time to make a good decision about people's lives. And that's what we're talking about. We're talking about people's lives, whether they're kids or whether they're adults. And as you can see, mental health issues are becoming more and more of a priority in this country, and also in Woodbury County. So that's all I have to say, and I don't want a lecture.
Anyone else?
Major Wick, the Sheriff's Office. I want to clear the air on a question that was asked earlier at the beginning of this meeting by Mr. Potabam. The question was asked if anybody had made a phone call requesting additional security for this meeting tonight. And Mr. Ung did call me, contact me in my office, asking that he felt that the meeting could become contentious, and there was a possibility that they could lose what they felt was order of the meeting, the order of the meeting. And he asked if we were going to provide adequate security for this meeting, and I assured him that we would be here and we would provide adequate security for this meeting.
My name is John Williams, sixteen thirteen, West Seventeenth. I hate public speaking. First of all, I'm trying to figure out how to say this without getting upset. I understand all you guys saying you don't get your information. I get that. It's trouble, so keep asking. I don't know what else to tell you on that. On the second note, you brought up the Sanford Center, so I'm going to bring it up. To me, you guys consider it a romper room. After-school activities, why are we funding this? Let me tell you, I'm a taxpayer. You talk about it being mental health, my son has ADHD, my daughter had health problems when she was in school, both of my kids went there. I would fund this myself if I could. And what you're doing is a travesty, because to me, I see this one way, and one way only. I've listened to papers, I've listened to people. You don't get your way, you want full funding, you want pullout. I feel that's wrong. Plain and simple. And I'll tell you from sitting in the back room and watching all the, there's two people on this board already have their mind made up, and I think there's a third, so I don't even know why you're here.
Thank you very much. Can I respond?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I, I do appreciate you sharing from the heart. What I want to say is this, I wish that the Sanford Center would continue, for services like your children and your family provide, were provided. So there's mental health funding within the Sioux City Community School District today. Came from project where? Federal grant. Sioux City Community School District did what any governmental organization would normally do, it put out an RFP. Supervisor Cass and I saw it, because we were actually tasked with going on behalf of Sioux Rivers to have the conversation with the Sioux City Community School District, to ask the question, are services being delivered in the manner in which best affects kids? Now, why would they put out an RFP? Could it be that they wanted the most highly qualified individuals? Who won that RFP? The Boys and Girls Home? Why? Because they had licensed clinicians. The Sanford Center pulled out of North Middle School after a worker resigned there. This board did not cut any funding. The Sioux Rivers Region Board did not cut any funding, in fact, we said we don't want to cut or touch any funding this year. Where that money was lost from, I don't know, that's not our, our deal. My wish, or my hope, is that if that funding is still there, that they would do what the other. other nonprofits, 60 or more, have done in this community, including, like the Boys and Girls Home, competing in their RFP process because it ultimately is about those kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Grant?
Fitz Grant, Executive Director of the Sanford Center, 2716 Bangnaug Court. I'm not here to convince you guys to state the facts. 240 kids were lose services based on your decisions. Yes, Jeremy, you came to the Sanford Center, but you never asked me about our programs. Let it be clear that you came and you donated $100 money order and you asked me if I would take some hot dogs from your community or staff. Thank you. Mr. Ung, you came in a couple of days ago and we had a great conversation. Never once did you guys ask me about the facts about the Sanford Center and the work that we have done in this community. It's unfair that we've been put through the things that we've been put through. Mr. Taylor, you talk about the Sioux City School District. You worked for the district. You went to Paul Gosman. How come you didn't ask Paul Gosman, "Hey, can we use some of that money?" Why didn't you ask? You care about the program, but you never asked that question to him. Nope, nope, let me talk. You never asked that question. And if you did, you didn't share it to me. And after you had the review, you never once contacted me and said, "Hey, Fitz, this is what we found out. This is the disagreement. This is the concerns of the district." Nothing. That's why we talk about the rules being changed. We never got a feedback. I ask you this, what metrics did you use to judge the Sanford Center? Show me. Give me some documentation so I can get some feedback. Never once, you made all these accusations, concerns, not once did you pick up that phone to call me. I thought we had a relationship, but apparently we don't. You draw all the conclusions, and I don't know where you've gotten your answers from, but you never came in there and you asked me about any of those programs. Now, Mr. Ung, yes, you did, you came in. We had a great time talking about the program, sharing about some of the things that we do. You asked me about conflict management, talked to you about that too. But today, you're going to make a bad decision. You're going to hurt the lives of these kids, these families. You talk about that therapist. We're on the front line. Those therapists are not going to be in those schools working 40 hours a week. They're not going into those homes to talk to those parents. They're not going to do it. And furthermore, who's going to connect the kid to the therapist? Answer that question. Will you guys be the advocate for these kids? No, we are the advocates. And I ask you this question too. If you're going to take the program from the kids, you tell them you're going to take the program. Come to the Sanford Center and tell our kids, tell 45 kids in the after-school program that they can't have services because people on the board didn't do their due diligence. They didn't take the time to come and see about our kids. So, if you want to do it, tell them. Because it's not right. It is not right. It is not right. 27 years I've given my life to Sioux City. Jeremy, where was you at?
Where was I at when?
In the fight, working with these kids.
In that risk classroom?
You were in a school that I made safe. My sweat, my blood, my tears, I made that school safe. Those outreach workers put their lives on the line so you could teach your class. So, some of those kids with some of the issues that they were having, we took care so you could teach your class. And now we stand in a day like we did nothing. Nobody never wrote us a check. We provided a service. We made this community safe in what we did. So, I ask you, make the right decision. It's about our kids. It's about our kids. How can you not sit there and care about kids? May I ask you a question? You got a kid and he can't read, you wait for that kid to fail before you get him help? You help him. And that's what we do. We help those kids before they fail, before they end up in the system. That's what we do. Now, tell me, can you ensure that our kids get the help they need? Can you ensure that 240 kids going to get the services they need? Thank you.
Thank you.
I respond, Mr. Chair?
Yes, to?
Just for the good of the public, Fitz Grant was not in the room. Paul Gosman, Don Cass and myself and Supervisor Cass could confirm that we did raise that question. In fact, it's a good question. It's one that the chairmen's raised themselves, which is if the Sioux City Community School District has $2 to $2.5 million vet risk funding, why would that not be an appropriate source? Number two, we haven't said from the beginning that we are taking this funding. Can we guarantee? And what metrics would we use? Yes, licensed clinicians, like they have in Sioux County, like they have in Plymouth County, like the Sulaan Mental Health provides. And then, number three, there's no market on caring about kids, so don't imply that anybody on this board does not. I take offense to it. I take offense as somebody that worked with at-risk kids, as somebody, a son of somebody who worked in special ed for 37 years, as somebody that dedicated their lives. It's just not, just not true. I, I didn't interrupt you while you were speaking, but to, but to do the, the character thing, where you say you don't care about kids, when you say, "You know what? I want to provide kids with the highest level of service and not have a precedence where we just say, 'You know what? The Boys and Girls Home? No way. You're not going to receive that money.'" When they say, "We, we could qualify for it," we're going to say, "We're going to put the very best services for those kids." That's what this is about, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Walter?
Shane Walter, 210 Central Avenue in Orange City. There are a number of things that were said here tonight by a number of board members, and I can't respond to everything that was said adequately in the couple of minutes that I have. I'd be very happy to visit with each and every one of you at length. If you feel like giving me a call or coming to my office and visiting with me, I'd be happy to do that. And I know that I could provide some clarity on some of the issues that were raised here tonight. I'll respond to one thing that was said tonight by Supervisor Raddick. You indicated that you had asked for information and were not provided that. I happen to have an email here that was sent to you on August 21st that has an Excel spreadsheet attached detailing all of the payments that we've made to all of our consumer or our provider.
Can I ask which account sent to?
K. Raddick.
Which K. Raddick?
The one that we typically send, that we send our board package to.
So, my Gabberts, Woodbury County, Iowa.gov?
I believe so. I don't know. I'll have to look at it. But I can give you that. But it's here, in my set folder. But anyway, whether you got it or not, it was, it was done.
On August 21st?
On August 21st. And we provided you with a listing of all of our payments to all of the providers through August 16th of this fiscal year. I'll provide you that, a copy of that email later. You can see it in my phone here if you like. That's all I've got to say. But I would encourage anybody that wants to visit a bit further about any of this to do that, please.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. I would move the resolution as read.
I'll second the motion by Taylor. Further discussion by the board. I would like to see, let's kind of decide, choice A, choice B. Do we try to join another region first?
I believe that that would have the best prospects, and I believe that there are other regions that we can look at that would be transparent in the way that they function. And so, I am, I'm willing to explore those options. But I think Representative Hall alluded to earlier, kind of is putting the cart before the horse. In other words, trying to find a region to go to without signaling this resolution. I think it's important to signal this resolution. And again, I believe so for providing the best services to those whom we are charged to serve.
I believe I've said everything I need to say, other board members.
I, I haven't said anything. I've been sitting here listening. I've taken some phone calls from county residents, people reaching out to me. One thing I do not like is someone telling me what I've said about the Sanford Center because I have never, ever said anything of the sort. I don't want to close it down, Mr. Williams. Don't tell me what I said or what I think, please. I don't view it as a romper room. Don't put words in my mouth. I don't like that, and I forget what the other comment was, but someone, I believe it was Mr. Grant saying that we don't care about kids. Don't put words in my mouth, please. I don't appreciate that. You have no idea how much I care about kids, how much I care about this county. Now, that said, I know the motion's been made and seconded. Honestly, I'm struggling with this. I've taken lots of notes. Believe me, I have concerns and this board has run repeatedly on open records, on transparency and all those issues. And believe me, I think those are paramount to whether it's this county or whether it's a region or whether it's Sioux Rivers, whether it's Lus Hills, Hungry Canyons, all of it. I, I think transparency is, is the base of all government, period, at whatever level, city, county, whatever, I don't care. Transparency, integrity is, is, is what matters. And personally, I just think we might be rushing into this. I do, I do, to your point about sending the message, I get that. Like I said, I've sat here this entire meeting with saying nothing, but believe me, it's not that I haven't been listening or paying attention. So, that's my deal.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Yeah. I appreciate your comments. I do. Certainly have a right to speak for yourself. Other board members? Are there any other comments from the board?
You know, I wouldn't be opposed to bringing it back next week with language about searching out another region if that would make you feel better about it, I guess, in that regards.
That is the avenue that we're currently engaged in. So, obviously, it has to be taken.
And I would just, I would assure that upon passage of this motion, that I would do everything in order to be able to foster that dialogue, to make sure that they know Woodbury County is looking for a communicative, cooperative, collaborative relationship and report that back to the board as one of the liaisons.
Mr. Potabom?
I'm sorry. To the extent that you're willing to engage with that, with me on that, Supervisor Raddick, I'd be willing to work with you on that.
Mr. Potabom?
I'm just curious, because I was going back to something Dennis said earlier about another region. I was just curious if we've already started feeling out other regions, just see if they're interested.
What I called them about was their per capita, because I did not have a chart. One region did provide me a chart for the whole state, for all the regions with their maximum per capita. So, you know, we've been feeling out a little bit to get information only, not saying we go to this, this region or this region. We're just trying to get information.
Hearing no further discussion from the board, will the auditor please call the roll?
DeWitt?
Nay.
Potabom?
No.
Raddick?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Ung?
Aye. And the motion passes three to two with Potabom and DeWitt opposed. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for a generally respectful discussion. Item 15 is the chairman's report for information only. Item A is the board supervisors' appointments, specifically the compensation board. I'm putting this on the agenda for us to discuss is simply because it's timely. We had our two representatives for the board that we are required by code to put up to the compensation board. Their terms expired at the end of the fiscal year, and those positions have not been filled. We need to do so relatively soon. Yeah, I was going to get to that. So, we did ask if they would like to be reappointed. One of the two has said they would. Also, I've received word from supervisors on the board. There are one, possibly two, new people interested, which the board will have to appoint. Past precedent has been for the chairman to appoint, as I understand it, but I will put them on the agenda to be voted up or down. Once we, once I am able to secure two that are willing. We need to do this because we would like them to meet earlier than they did last year. There was a little bit of a time crunch, you know, with meeting into the spring almost. And so, if they can meet end of November, December, that would be, that would be best. So, this is just an information item to let you know that it'll be coming up hopefully shortly. And if you are wanting to put anyone forward to represent the board, it does need to happen relatively quickly. I've, 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 I've had this on my radar for a few months at least, let's put it that way. Item B is courthouse tour, which I gave on September 28th. Goodwill Adult Day Program came, ages ranging from 20 to 60. It was a special needs group, and it was nice to see so many smiles. A lot of people, you know, see the courthouse for the first time and you're talking to them and they're still gazing up at the, at the rotunda and the dome there, so.
They said you made it entertaining.
Yeah. Pat Gil came by when I was talking to the group and asking if they were having fun. Item, item C is another courthouse tour I gave on the same day to ISU preservation class. They came for, to stay one night in Sioux City, and class size, I'd say about a dozen. Enjoyed some of the more cerebral topics as far as what our board discusses, takes care of. You know, a lot of local government is new to people that aren't otherwise interested in it going through college, but they were interested in historical preservation. And people are always amazed when I tell them how expensive it is to fix anything or do anything in a historic building, but it gives them a new appreciation. They also mentioned coming to our centennial next May and participating in some of the tours. They already had planned to come in May, coincidentally. Item D is another courthouse tour I did on October 2nd for Healan High School. It was an elective class. It's just the, just the joy to be able to do these, and if other supervisors would like to at some point too, let me know and I'll get you in the rotation when we get, when we get these requests. It's just a good opportunity to give people the chance to ask questions, show them around different, you know, areas of the courthouse and explain some of the murals. I always like asking groups how old they think the courthouse is as we stand next to the banner in the atrium that says we're celebrating our 100th anniversary next year. So, some of them, some of them get it, but it's fun. Item 16 is reports on committee meetings. Board members, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I know the hour's late, so we'll make it short, but the Health and Wellness Committee today, an excellent meeting, and we talked about some of the proactive ways that we can get claims down. As you know, during the budgeting process, we had an 8% increase. Our Human Resources Director advocated 11 to 12%. We thought that that was a little rich, both on the behalf of taxpayers as well as employees. At 8%, we are sitting with about a $66,000 fund balance. That's a good thing. That's a good thing, and I'm talking about, uh, the revenue, for lack of a better term, versus claims. We're looking at a couple of different ways. Smoking cessation, there's something called Chantix. Are you all familiar with this? Um, one of you, maybe? So, it's a prescription medication. Um, currently, it's not covered by our providers, but we're talking about whether there's a menu of services for smoking cessation, like Chantix or classes or some combination thereof. We think having skin in the game is probably a good thing. In other words, we don't pay for the whole thing, but we incentivize, and we think that there's some immediacy to seeing claims come down. Same thing with naturally slim. Although I failed out of the program, I lost nine pounds, but others, um, have lost much more, and we think that incentivizing them to may be a very good thing. So, some good stuff coming up. A historic meeting. It's probably the driest, longest one we've had, but the time capsule may or may not come out.
We talked about talking about it.
Yep. So, I don't know why they put it in the cornerstone. That's all I have.
Um, the Conservation Board, just to let you know that the, uh, legal counsel for the Winnebago tribe that was here at our last meeting, because of the amount of the schedule for the October meeting, she's agreed to appear before the Conservation Board in November. So she'll be at the November meeting.
And I've been, I've been told that Director Schneider is, is postponing a, a vote of opposition or support until that meeting. Is that my understanding?
He said he wants to have a chance for the whole board to talk with her.
A question for Supervisor Potabom. Transition with a new incoming director? When, how, everything?
Should be coming up real soon, and I don't have the date exactly. I think he starts in...
Could we do something like going out to famous Dave's and just like getting to know him a little bit and post? And something like that, or, eh, I don't know. Just be nice to get to know the guy.
I'll ask Rick.
Okay.
I know he's supposed to be coming on board. Because of insurance, I think it's November, because they want to have some transition time with him.
If you don't mind, I think that'd be good, just, uh, you know, instead of seeing him here for the first time and asking. So, appreciate it.
I haven't met him yet myself, so...
Uh, now that you mention it, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, Thursday night, there's an appreciation picnic at, uh, in Salix, uh, put on by the Conservation Board. If majority of the board is, is going, I would need to publish notice. I'm going.
I was planning on going.
I'm not, because I've already told Rick. That's why I'm glad he postponed this meeting, because I'm gonna be in the morning.
Okay.
I'm not, because the wife unit may be having a baby that night.
I'm not planning.
Well, that's a good excuse. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we have, we have two of five that will be going. I will not issue a public, uh, meeting notice. Other supervisors? Any citizen concerns?
I just got a quick question, Chairman. And I didn't want to speak during the hearing, um, whether you guys do the resolution or not, because I didn't want to be seen as the county attorney getting into that argument, because I'm not in that argument, so I want to make that clear. But as a citizen, I just want to give you an example of, they talked about preventative care, which is what those folks do, and a lot of other folks do it, too, not just those folks. But from that standpoint, when you go down this road of exploring other, other alternatives, just keep that peace in mind. Because when I started thinking about this, it brings me back to when I was in the eighth grade. We moved to Kansas City. There was a family that lived across the street. There was a bunch of kids in the neighborhood, but this family was similar to my family. Few boys. We played baseball, but only the younger one, which was a year or two younger than me. His brother was the same age as me, but the younger one had issues. And at that point, I didn't know what those issues were. I just knew he had some angry issues. Mom couldn't control him. Dad couldn't control him. The only person that could was that older brother that was my age. So when we were outside and he went off on whatever it was, we didn't have time to wait to go to that clinician, that therapist. It was his brother. And had it not been for his brother being there on the front lines, so to speak, I fear what would have happened to the rest of us kids because he was uncontrollable. But for that older brother, and I just wanted you to think about that when you're talking about that frontline folks versus those highly-paid folks, because there might not be enough time to get to those highly-paid folks. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't disagree with any of that. Needs to be a regional, regional approach, approach to prevention. Of course, we brought up some of the fairness of, of how it's being funded currently. Other board member, or other citizen concerns, excuse me? Any board concerns? A, a citizen concern, I believe.
My name is Nia Key. I'm the jail alternative coordinator. My position is a very new position, and, um, with Sioux Rivers. And I just want to speak to what Prosecutor Jennings mentioned as well. When we talk about those highly-trained specialists and therapists, being a social worker myself, it is important to have preventative services. A lot of the people that I currently see when I look at the demographics here and in all the rest of the counties, when I look at the people that are coming through the jails in all of the counties, a large portion of them have not finished high school. And so, it's so important to start when a child is very young. The therapists will provide the necessary and appropriate therapy. But the behavioral management, the tools that are necessary to train a child how to control their impulses and things of that nature, those things come from those frontline workers, outreach. Even when you look at services such as homeless services, it is the outreach worker who is the frontline, who engages that person, builds a relationship, and is the person who is most trusted to provide the teaching and the learning of different skills in order for that person to survive. And it's the same with children. So, while, you know, I see people on the back end of it, I would encourage you to really take a long look. Get all of the information that you can get before you make this final decision. Okay? Thank you for allowing me to speak.
We have another citizen concern.
Surprised he's walking all right after being on a motorcycle for a week.
Not walking very fast.
I just have one, and maybe it's too early to know. Our jail alternative coordinator, Nia, has been doing a good job. I'm just trying to find out if this'll all figure in, we'll be able to keep it just... And maybe it's too early to ask, but that's where I'm at.
According to this that was just handed to me, ninety-two percent of our funding's already coming from Woodbury County.
Right, and the, the only other thing I would say, and I think that's a fair question and a good question, looking at other regions, many other regions have jail alternative coordinators. In fact, the two that are mentioned have mature programs, and they have data in detail and stuff that I think we would look at and say, "Wow, that's exactly..." They can provide case examples of, "Here's how we, um, treated this individual." So, all of that, just to say, it's early, but our eyes are not off that ball, because we are very appreciative of everything that's going on and something that we'd advocate, continue.
Good, because Nia's, uh, doing a great job. I don't understand all the social work in, but macro and micro, I learned a little bit.
It's big words.
Yeah. And she's, uh, gathering data, so I just don't wanna, I don't wanna lose that. I think it's beneficial, thanks.
I would add, of course, you know, Woodbury County was the driving force, the push for that position at the region level, and Dave remembers that, so... Are there any board concerns?
I just want to let you know I will not be at next week's meeting. Hoping to be able to call in. That's the day I'm presenting to the Iowa State Police Association, so it just depends on how that goes. I have our pension report till that afternoon, so...
Good luck.
Do we have a meeting tomorrow night?
We do have a town hall meeting in Danbury tomorrow night at six-thirty. Any other board concerns? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
When's your last meeting here?